Good evening, everyone. I want to apologize, our mayor is having some technical difficulties. She will be joining us shortly. Can we start, please? We have a work session, May 26th. Oh, I see the mayor, Jamie, do you want to bring her in? Thank you. She will continue with the meeting.
Hey, sorry, I'm locked out again. I will have to deal with that on both my computers at this point. Sorry. Manny, were you about to do the pledge or intros?
Yes, I was gonna do the pledge, but please.
Go ahead, that's fine.
We'll do the pledge now.
Fledgelyes.
To the flag of the United States.
America. To republic. One nation, under God. Indivisible.
Trustee Ritchie.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Casada.
Present.
Mayor Levin.
Present.
Today, we have a public hearing in the matter of potential CDBG projects for the 2002 to 2024 grant cycle. Is there anybody here to speak for the public hearing? So we ask that those that are attendees to raise your hand if you would like to comment on the CDBG. Give me a minute, and then I'll bring you over to speak if you're interested. So the raise your hand is at the bottom of your screen. If you're on a computer and on your phone, I think it's, if you turn your phone landscape, it's at the bottom as well. Are you seeing anybody, Jamie?
Nope, there is no one here, so I think you can move forward.
Okay, I guess we're gonna close the public hearing, correct, Stuart?
Motion to close the public hearing would be needed, thank you.
Before we do that, would it be all right if we just sort of talked a little bit about the four projects that the village is putting forth? Sorry, I know this has been sort of a complicated process to follow, but the village did identify four projects on which we're looking for citizen participation at this point. Karen, do you mind if I introduce them?
You may go right ahead, thank you, Maddie.
Okay, sure thing. So the village is allowed to submit up to four projects, and we are going to take advantage of that potential for this grant cycle. So two of the projects are playground replacement projects. One is at Nelson Sitting Park, so for those who are familiar, that's right next door to Park School. The other one is, it's a park that not a whole lot of people knew existed, including some of us on staff. It is part of the old Croton Aqueduct Trail, the portion that is between Ann Street and North Malcolm. So as I mentioned, there's a paved section of the Croton Aqueduct Trail there. For those of you who are not familiar, the Croton Aqueduct Trail goes across many communities here in Westchester. In the village, it happens to be one of the only sections that actually is paved, and sort of, you know, it goes right through a, you know, a village neighborhood. And there's a little piece of playground equipment there, as well as a railroad tie amphitheater. So that project is going to be not only to replace the playground equipment and the amphitheater, but also potentially do some improvements that might include some solar lights along the path, and pretty unobtrusive things of that nature, as is the request of the state. It's actually state-owned property that the village maintains through an intermunicipal agreement. And then for Nelson Sitting Park, would pretty much be just a straight playground replacement. In both instances, we're looking to do playground equipment that's accessible to children of all mobility and needs. So those are the two playground projects. And then we have two ADA accessibility and sidewalk improvement projects along Spring Street in two different phases. So starting at Broad Avenue and moving towards Rockledge, there are two different projects. That's how the county asked us to split it up. And similar to what we did on Broad Avenue would be integrating ADA accessibility along the sidewalks and other various improvements having to do with streetscaping and so on. If anyone has any questions, happy to try and answer them. Karen, did I miss anything?
You covered it all very well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Maddie. So we went through exactly all this about a week ago. And on Monday night, just so people understand the process, there are also three non-for-profits that were interested within our community to present their programs that they are trying to get grants for, to both the town and village board. We held that meeting on Monday. So I'm going to assume that the fact that there aren't a lot of people on this call from the public is a very good sign in the sense that people are probably happy with the choices, because we've discussed them a few times, and we've mentioned them a few times. And I don't know what there's not to be happy about. This is improvements that I think is going to benefit lots of folks and families in our community, hoping to get all of them if we can, so.
Mayor, if I might, I would also share that, you know, that we've looked for community input on this in a variety of ways, not just through these meetings. So we had all of the meeting notices printed out and hung about town at the community center, at the library. Where else did we hang them? They're in Village Hall, they're on the website in both English and Spanish. And so that's not just the meeting notice, but also the description of all four projects I just mentioned.
Right. Thank you. So Martha, I think we're ready to close. We need to, we need to have a trustee.
All moved.
There we go. Any comments on the board?
No, thank you.
Everybody's good?
Are they done yet?
Alrighty, so we're ready to close. Can we go to a vote, please, Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a public comments on agenda items. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board on the one resolution on the agenda tonight?
Seeing none.
None, going on to the resolution. Notice of declaration to become lead agency and referral to the Environmental Advisory Council, declaration of lead agency status and determination that the proposed 2022 to 2024 Community Development Block Grant CDBG projects for the Village of Austin are unlisted actions for the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQR-A, and Chapter 118 of the Village Code and referral to the Environmental Advisory Council for consistency review pursuant to the Chapter 262 of the Village Code. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program, which is administered by the Westchester Department of Planning, will make funds available to local government for infrastructure improvements, neighborhood expansion and rehabilitation, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, economic development loans, public service and park rehabilitation, with the principal purpose of benefiting low slash moderate income persons. And whereas the Village of Austin proposes four projects for a CDBG application, those projects being A, replacement of the playground in Nelson Sitting Park, B, Spring Street streetscape improvements between Broad Avenue and Lafayette Avenue, C, Spring Street streetscape improvements between Lafayette Avenue and Scarborough Manor entrance, and D, replacement of play equipment and trail improvements to the Old Corn Aqueduct and North Malcolm Street. And whereas, six MICRR sections, 617.3A, of the rules and regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for implementation of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQR regulations, provides no agency involved in an action may undertake, fund or approve the action until it is complied with the provisions of SEQR. And whereas, SEQR regulation 617.2 defines an agency as a state or local agency, defines local agency as any local agency, board authority district, commission or governing body, including any city, county and other political subdivisions of the state, and defines action as including projects or physical activities such as construction or other activities that may affect the environment by changing the use, appearance or condition of any natural resource or structure that one are directly undertaken by an agency. And whereas, the village's proposed CDBG projects may affect the environment and will directly be directly undertaken by the village. And whereas, SEQR regulation 617.2 defines an involved agency as an agency that has jurisdiction by law to fund, approve or directly undertake an action, and lead agency as an involved agency principally responsible for undertaking, funding or approving an action, and therefore responsible for determining if an environmental impact statement is required in connection with the action and for the preparation and filing of the statement if one is required. And whereas, SEQR regulation 617.2 defines direct action as including an action plan and proposal for implementation by an agency but are not limited to capital projects. And whereas, Village Code Section 118-5A provides the lead agency is the agency board, department office or other body, the Village of Austin principally responsible for the carrying out funding or approving an action. The lead agency responsible for determining whether an EIS, environmental impact statement, is required for the action and for the preparing and filing of the EIS if it is required. And whereas, there are no other agencies other than the Board of Trustees to be qualified as lead agency. And whereas, SEQR regulation 617.6A provides in part, as early as possible in an agency's formulation of an action it proposes to undertake, it must do the following: determine whether an action is subject to SEQR, make a preliminary classification of an action as type 1 or unlisted using the information available. And whereas, SEQR regulation 617.4 and 617.5 include non-exhaustive lists of type 1 and type 2 actions. And whereas, it appears that the four proposed projects, A, replacement of the playground on Nelson Sitting Park, B, Spring Street streetscape improvements between Broad Avenue and Lafayette Avenue, C, Spring Street streetscape improvements between Lafayette Avenue and Scarborough Manor entrance, and D, replacement of play equipment and trail improvements to the Old Corn Aqueduct do not come within either the listed type 1 or type 2 actions. And whereas, SEQR regulation 612.2A all defines unlisted action as all actions not identified as a type 1 or type 2 action in this part, or in the case of a particular agency action not identified as a type 1 or type 2 action in the agency's own SEQR procedures. And whereas, Village Code Section 118-6B provides, when any person submits an application for funding or other approval for a type 1 or unlisted action to any agency, department, body, board or officer of the Village of Austin, an EAF, environmental assessment form must accompany the application. For a type 1 action, a full EAF must be prepared, and for unlisted actions, either the full EAF or the short form may be used as appropriate. And whereas, as pursuant to the village's local waterfront revitalization program, LWRP, approved by the New York Secretary of State on October 25th, 2011, the boundary of the village's waterfront revitalization area extends west of New York Route 9 to the Hudson River. And whereas, the location of the four proposed CDBG projects are all west of Route 9 and are therefore within the village's waterfront revitalization area. And whereas, Village Code Section 262-4 defines consistent as the action will fully comply with the LWRP policy standards and conditions, and whenever practicable, will advance one or more of them. And whereas, Village Code Section 262-5A provides that the Board of Trustees shall determine consistency with the LWRP for those actions which require Board of Trustees' approval. And whereas, Village Section 262B provides that where the Board of Trustees is planning to undertake a direct action, it shall prepare a coastal assessment form defined as the form used by an agency to assist in determining the consistency of an action with the local waterfront revitalization program. And whereas, pursuant to Village Code Section 262-5C, the Board of Trustees shall refer the completed coastal assessment form to the village manager and the village's Environmental Advisory Council, EAC. And whereas, pursuant to Village Code Section 262-5D, the EAC shall consider whether the proposed action is consistent with the LWRP policy standards and conditions, and shall base its determination on all completed applications, the coastal assessment form and other information it deems to be necessary to its consistency review. And whereas, pursuant to Village Code Section 262-5A, the Board of Trustees shall make a determination of consistency after receiving the AAC's recommendation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Austin declares itself a lead agency for the four proposed projects to be submitted by the village as part of its CDBG application for 2002 to 2024, and be it further resolved that pursuant to SEQR regulation 617.3D, the Board of Trustees as lead agency will make every reasonable effort to involve other agencies and the public in the SEQR process, which will involve notification to interested agencies and members of the public about the proposed for proposed projects, including conducting public hearings as required by 24 CFR 570.486, and be a further result that lead agency, the Board of Trustees, makes a preliminary classification that the proposed projects are unlisted actions, and the short environmental assessment form shall be prepared. And be a further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall prepare coastal assessment forms for the four proposed projects, the forms to be used in determining if the proposed projects are consistent with the village's LWRP, and be a further resolved that the Board of Trustees should further propose projects with the coastal assessment force to the village's EAC for recommendations of whether the proposed projects are consistent with the LWRP, and be a further resolved that upon receipt of the EAC's recommendations, the Board of Trustees will make consistency findings regarding the four proposed projects for the CDBG application, and be a further resolved. And pursuant to Village Code Section 118-6C, the Board of Trustees as lead agency for the proposed action shall make determinations of environmental significance as to the four proposed projects based upon the short environmental assessment forms and the criteria set out in the SEQR regulation 617.7C. And be a further resolved that the Board of Trustees as lead agency shall make its determinations of significance within 20 calendar days of receipt of the short environmental assessment forms and other reasonably necessary information or within 20 calendar days of its establishment as lead agency, whichever comes later. Do you have a motion?
All moved.
Second.
Comments on the board?
Can you read paragraph two again, please?
I think that has been one of the longest resolutions I've actually read for the village.
That was long.
Yeah. Um, is that it? All those in favor?
Aye.
No, wait a second. Hold on, hold on. I just want to make it clear that this very long resolution would actually sound like it was repeating itself. I know it wasn't. Just so the public understands is that this is now sort of the formal entree to the next step in the process to make sure that the village, like anybody else, follows all the environmental rules and everything else that needs to be done. I'm not reading this whole thing again, but for the record, so that we ourselves follow the same rules or follow the rules that are necessary in order to move these projects forward. We make sure there are public hearings, which is what we just discussed. We make sure there's input, we just discussed that. So this is the formality of moving this to the next process. As long as it sounded, that's, I think, what it says, and the EACs mention a lot, because they're going to be reviewing some of the environmental issues. They were mentioned a whole bunch of times, and that's why they were mentioned. Trying to put it into just sort of their simplest terms, and I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, as amended, there was a typo, so it's just an extra T needs to be added later. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I just need a motion in a second to adjourn into the work session.
So all moved.
Second.
All those in favor? I guess we'll go right into that.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to this special meeting. On this date, 5/26/2021, we are concluding, we are adjourning this meeting, moving into our regularly scheduled program. Have a good evening, and hopefully you will join us in the work session. Good night. Good night.
Did the mayor not realize we're in the same meeting?
I don't think she did. She'll be back, I think.
Okay.
And so, while that happens, I'm sorry about that. I think Village Manager, do you want to start with the agenda while the mayor gets back to our meeting, please?
Sure, thank you, Deputy Mayor Casada. First up, we have our treasurer Dale Brennan here tonight with a, she's reporting on, it wasn't really an audit, but a study that was done by the Office of the State Controller. We were randomly selected to, or the State Controller, to evaluate our practices during COVID, our financial practices. And we did receive a favorable report, and I would like to turn this over to Dale, who will explain what the purpose of this was. It's really fiscal oversight from the state level, and tell you a little bit about the process and the results of this, the findings of this. Dale still there?
Dale is having some connectivity issues. So we might move on to the next agenda item and allow her to catch up. I think it might be the weather.
There's a lot of stuff going on tonight, but we'll come back. She's working on that.
Okay, while we're waiting for our treasurer, we're going to move on to a zoning change that was made at Two Sherman Place, so, or that is being sought for Two Sherman Place. And I'd like to turn that over to Corporation Council Cahan to talk about that zoning change.
Thank you, Village Manager Datori. Folks, you may recall that a few weeks back, you held a public hearing with regard to the proposed zoning map change for Two Sherman Place, which is the old trolley barn, to change it from the S-75 Single Family Zoning District to the NC-2 Neighborhood Center Two Zoning District. The board approved a resolution which would start the environmental review process. This was viewed as what we call an unlisted action. The Director of Planning, who is on with us now, prepared, the applicant prepared part one of the short environmental assessment form. The village prepared parts two and three. Those are now completed. We believe that there are no significant adverse environmental impacts that will result from the text change. And what we would propose is that at the next meeting of the board, which would legislative meeting, which would be on June the 2nd, that the board basically find that it is a negative declaration and approve the zoning text change. You've already held the public hearing with regard to the zoning text change. The zoning text change was recommended by the planning board. And when I say text change, I apologize, map change was recommended by the planning board. So that's where we are. We've completed, in our view, the environmental process. And if anyone has any questions on the EAC, on the short environmental assessment forms that are, were made part of tonight's agenda, both myself and Director of Planning Martinez are here if you have any questions.
I have a question. There had been some residents had written letters with, you know, various issues that they had. I mean, was all that resolved, or?
It's not a matter of resolving it, Trustee White. I mean, for our purposes, it was a matter of doing the environmental review. And the environmental review is filling out, is completing the form and doing that. And I will say this, we don't, you know, we haven't gotten reports of, you know, as far as I know, police have not gotten reports of trucks hanging out, you know, on the street, and people sleeping in the trucks, which I believe was one of the complaints. But from an environmental standpoint, there's no significant environmental impacts that would, negative impacts that would result from the requested text change.
Well, if I may, I'm not sure if anybody else has any questions. And Jamie, I'm assuming our mayor's not here yet. So Stuart.
She's still trying. She's having some technical troubles.
No problem. Thank you, Jamie. So Stuart, in regards to the process right now, what will be the next steps for something like this? If the board is, will have to do a resolution, we have to go to do a tax map amendment at this point?
It would be a zoning map amendment, not a tax map amendment, a zoning map.
Thank you.
It would be a resolution declaring, you know, basically issuing a negative declaration with regard to this, and which would stop the environmental process and approving the matching.
Yeah. Um, Jaime, if you can fill me in with the, or fill us out with the rest of the process in regards to your involvement on the planning board level. What will be the next steps on you and after that?
For the planning board?
No, not for the planning board, for the planning department itself. Because right now, the, so this applicant, sure, asked for a request of change of, of so on, in a way. So what does that mean for this particular applicant if we decided to move that route?
So we did have a discussion about this internally. I think the next steps would be that because the applicant initially approached just about a sign, if the zoning does go through, it'll probably kick them into site plan review. And so, you know, they're not going to be able to just go get a sign. They're gonna have to go into site plan review, and at that point, we'll have to take a look at what they're doing, the particulars of how they're operating their site. And then, you know, there were some complaints by the neighbors about cars being parked in the street. So site plan review gives an opportunity to really come up with a strategy where they maintain their activities on-site and don't do things around the area. So that's kind of the next step, if this is approved by the Board of Trustees.
I don't have any additional questions. I'm not sure if anybody else in our mayor is back. So I don't know if any of my colleagues have any other questions on this matter. So I'm seeing, I'm not sure if mayor's, the mayor's going in and out, maybe? So mayor.
Clearly one of those nights. Sorry, I feel like I'm really interrupting the meeting. Sorry about that.
No problem. So mayor, we were talking about Two Sherman Place in regards to a zoning map change. I don't think we have any additional questions. I guess the only question will be to the board if, what are, what do we, what do we want to do on this particular case? So I'll be asking our board members, what do you guys want to do after this?
You're opening up for comments, right, Manny?
In regards to the, correct, to us right now, among ourselves, to actually see, you know, are we accepting this as a negative declaration? And if we are all okay with this, you know, we'll, obviously we'll ask Stuart to prepare a resolution and then go to a legislator and go from there for the next steps. And if not, then, you know, the process will stop.
There is, there is actually one other thing that I think is worth mentioning here. Me and Stuart had a discussion about the lack of a official village map. So if this is approved or if it's not approved, it might be a good time for us to create an official village map of the zoning codes, of the zoning districts. And so this will be a good opportunity to do that either.
I'm sorry, Jaime, you confused me. I thought we do have a zoning, official village map of our zoning. So the one that we have, it is not an official map?
It doesn't have the appearance of an official map. It has, it's a village map that says zoning code. We know that zoning districts are the older official zoning maps, the ones that were sealed, you know, by the clerk or sealed by a date. I think stretched all the way back to 1990. And in 2009, when they redid the zoning designations, they didn't actually get a new map with a designated date with the name. So no, they don't really have what's a new one. And there was a additional rezoning that was done on, I think it was 78 Croton Avenue. And of course, there was no official map made after that was done.
So I see what you're saying. So pretty much, we don't have an updated map with the changes that we have made since 2009?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like we don't have a map. We just haven't have an updated map. Okay.
We just don't have an updated map.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you for that clarification. Obviously, that, there's a lot of variables between 2009 and now. I'm assuming that kind of did not happen, but yes.
How often are the maps updated?
They should be updated every time the zoning map is changed.
Okay.
So thanks for that clarification and alignment, Jaime. It would be very helpful for us to have an updated zoning map of all the changes, or minor changes we have done through the years since 2009. But the question is still on the floor. Are you guys okay when moving forward with this particular request?
I am.
I'm fine with it.
Anybody else?
Fine with it.
I think we've discussed this quite a bit. Manny, are you fine with it, or are you not?
No, I think, and we have talked about this building for quite a while, not just for this application, but prior to this application.
About this cat lady. Tell me more about this protect.
So, but, so yes, so we, I'm okay with this, making this modification to it.
Okay, and so we're making the modification, and we're updating the zoning map when we do that. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I believe so, but I will, I, I want to, I want to be very careful with, with this, Jaime, because there's a couple other suggestions that I have had discussions with Stuart in regards to changes on our zoning. So I wouldn't want to do this right now if something else happens. So, and I'm hoping that will be before the end of the year or before that. So I, I wouldn't want to redo the process. I mean, you can start updating the map, but I wouldn't want to release anything just yet. That will be, and that could be an internal conversation, no, no.
It, it's really up to you, but if you want, I can have a map ready by next week. The GISA file is already drawn, so.
Okay, then that's fine.
I can have it next week.
So you're gonna update it. What makes it official is that the board?
I'll probably just put like a title block on it where the, you know, it can be signed by the mayor, approved on this day.
All right, so that's the part that, that wasn't made official is the, let's call it the signature of the filing part is what's not. And there's a process like everything else in government. And you think you'll have it ready by next week and you'll fill it in. Okay, I got a little worried there when you said this is, we don't have an official.
It's not a.
I got a little scared, but I'm not scared anymore. Okay, so it sounds like we're ready to move on this. This is a work session. We're not voting here, correct?
That is correct, me.
Okay. Let us move to the next topic.
Okay, thank you. We, we seem to have our, our treasure back too, who's also having some difficulties tonight. But as I mentioned.
Wait, is Dale also having, now I don't feel so bad because I was.
Dale, Dale disappeared when we first put her on the agenda, but we have her now. So Treasure Brennan will, will now talk about the audit from the Office of State Controller that reviewed our practices during COVID and, and how we planned accordingly, taking twenty twenty learning into consideration for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Dettori. Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Yes, I apologize for doing a disappearing act earlier. Whether I believe, thank you, Maddie, is playing a role in that tonight, Mayor. So back in early February, we performed an entrance interview with the Office of the State Controller. We, the Village of Austin was one of twenty entities across New York State selected for a two thousand twenty-one adopted budget review. The primary focus of the State Controller was to determine if the village had carefully considered the impact of the pandemic and adjusted the twenty twenty-one Village of Austin adopted budget accordingly. So within the report, the Office of the State Controller's opinion is favorable, meaning that the Village of Austin did develop and adopt the two thousand twenty-one budget, taking into consideration all the knowledge we had learned over the twenty twenty fiscal year and also anticipated additional hurdles that might arise as the economy slowly rebounds from the pandemic. So within the memo was a copy of the report from the State Controller, which says to assess whether local officials adequately considered the impact of the pandemic on their financial operations while developing their budgets. And their summary of findings says our review found that officials adequately, adequately assess the impact of the pandemic on financial operations while developing estimates for significant revenues and expenditures in the two thousand twenty-one adopted budget. And additionally, in consideration of the continually new and evolving impacts caused by the pandemic, village officials should carefully monitor their budgeted actual revenues and expenditures and make amendments to the budget as needed throughout the year. And we touched on this about a month or so ago when we did a mini review of two thousand twenty-one. And we will be doing a more in-depth review of twenty twenty-one in June. So we are well on track to keep up with their their comment on that. A little background. When we had our entrance interview with the Office of the State Controller, which I, I believe was very thorough on both our parts, not only financially, but also going into the social aspect of it. You know, all sorts of areas. At the close of that meeting, I then went and wrote a letter to the Office of the State Controller, highlighting how the village, early in the pandemic, had created three different COVID budget scenarios so that we could keep up with the ever-changing landscape and modify accordingly as we went along. I also went into detail how the board and the departments had reviewed all of our lines for the two thousand twenty-one budget and adjusted accordingly to make sure that we were covered for any known and potential hurdles that were going to show up, we believed, in two thousand twenty-one. And the majority of those have, have really, really played out to be what, what we anticipated. Some are doing a little better than we thought. Some are doing a little, not so much better at this point. We're hoping, especially in areas of like the station parking, that those revenues will pick up. The court fines have definitely picked up in the last month or so, so that's good. And when I received the April sales tax estimates, we were almost fifty percent more in sales tax revenue projected to come in April of this year over April of last year, which is a great, a great signal that, that the economy is, is, is slowly coming back around a little bit. Any questions?
Thank you, Dale. Always. I know the word adequately and doesn't usually sound like a wonderful grade to get, but in the world of government and finance, adequately is what we aim for. That's good news.
I appreciate. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think COVID was a huge challenge for the finance department as well because a lot of what we do is about budgets and we have a responsibility about overseeing budgets. We count on you and your whole team. Obviously, you're not alone in doing this to make sure that we sound budget COVID was a challenge now. I read the email earlier. Is it my understanding that they're doing all municipalities? Or was this sort of one of these random, we'll choose a few municipalities? Or is this something that has been done across all the municipalities and not just informational for me?
It was, when I actually went on, because this does get posted, excuse my allergies too. It, it does get posted to the Office of the State Controller's website. And you can find us along with, I found nine others at that point, that their reviews were posted. They were mostly upstate entities at this point. I had not seen any other. And, and they, they all were, you know, government. I did not see any schools at that point. So whether they did do schools or not, they may be in the next, the next ten that they, that they put on the website. But there was only twenty.
Right, so they're going through taxing municipalities and I'm sure it's helpful. I mean, if they find something, you know, it's, it's, could be helpful. So this is great, good report card, appreciated. You know, we always ask what, what has, what has COVID actually done across so many of our lines, whether it's budgets, personnel, emotional stress, all sorts of different pieces. This is one of them. Much appreciated and really great. It's like getting an A in government when you get adequate.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any? It is, right? I took a while to figure that out. Adequate never sounds so great, but hey, it's okay. Adequate is, you know, you'll take that any day of the week. Anybody else have any questions?
Not really questions. I just, you know, want to say thank you again for Dale and everybody and, and her department for all the hard work that you guys keep doing. I'm not surprised. You know, I, I have not been, I think it was only one of the auditors a couple of years back. There was something negative that we had a lot of money, we should have, we should be spending money. I mean, that was the only negative thing that I remember. One of the orders one time said is like, you guys have a lot of savings. Like, you should guys, you know, I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah, well.
That was before COVID. That was way before.
Now they're not going to be saying that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they, they will.
Yeah, but you know, this is, is definitely good news. Please, you know, thank you and take all, everyone in your department for all the hard work that you guys do. You know, it's not, um, obviously I know this is very tedious. And it's not the first time, um, my tenure, I believe, the state has ordered us before, at least one time before many years back. So it's not the first time that they have come to Austin to, to do that, to do this kind of stuff. Though the, the public may not be aware or aware, we do our own audit as well every year. You know, we do that every year without, you know, that's, that's something that they do that almost at the, at the beginning of the year in a way. So again, I'm not surprised, but thank you, Dale, for, for all the coordination that I'm sure you have to do in regards to that, so.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Dale.
It was a village effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move on to the next item, Village Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Treasure Brennan. Our next item is our Code Enforcement Task Force. We are going to be presenting, actually Joe Agostinelli, our Building Inspector, and Jaime Martinez, our Director of Planning, have been working hard on this. They will present an overview of the task force. We did have our first meeting earlier this week, a very preliminary meeting. And they will present the task force and, and the outline of it. And the next step is, is going forward is a series of meetings to put together strategy, goals and objectives, working with staff from all different departments and divisions as well as board members. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe and Jaime.
Hello, everybody.
Whoa.
First, I would like to share my screen if that's okay. Let me just set up my screen here. So first I want to thank Maddie for putting together the presentation, actually, to, to put this very beautiful looking presentation together, so.
Well, I, I'm gonna have to comment on that right off the bat. It's just like very good looking, Maddie. Right off the bat, I have to say something. I can't let it go without it.
Yes, big shouts to Maddie.
You guys are making me blush. Geez, it's a preset.
Take the credit when given. Just say thank you, we'll move on.
So first things first, talk about the vision, right? The, the mission of the, of the Code Enforcement Task Force is to help coordinate the identification and enforcement of business and residential code violations throughout the village with a specific focus on the identification of, for lack of a better word, illegal or, and/or substandard slum housing or seriously blighted properties. And this would happen through regular meetings in a systematic block-by-block field investigation of village neighborhoods by task force members. The goal of this task force is to improve lives of residents by addressing blighted, neglected properties and overcrowding conditions created by illegal and substandard housing. And the task force would report directly to the village manager. So who is on this task force? I'm gonna actually hand this over to Joe to talk a little bit about why there is really this broader task force, including a lot of different people and the various roles that they play.
So we have a number of departments that are involved. As you see, it's the Building Department, the Planning Department, Department of Public Works, including the Water Department, Police Department, Fire Department, Parks and Rec, and obviously our Legal Department. And the idea is to join all the departments together because each of the departments have a role in writing documentation which can strengthen our case if we identify a property that may be, where there may be an instance where there's an overcrowding situation, in some cases, a property maintenance situation. So, for example, you know, the Water Department would do some research on a property if we identified a possible overcrowding situation where it would compare water usage and say, you know, we've done some research, you know, over the last six months to a year, the amount of water usage is double what the normal two-family home would consume. Same thing if it was with the sanitation department. What is the normal pickup of garbage at a two-family home? Is this particular property producing more, more garbage than, than a normal two-family home? In the case of planning, if there's some situations in the, in the, in the house where some modifications were made and they didn't go through the proper approvals, they didn't either get a zoning variance, they didn't get a VAR. It could be where something got modified and was an open porch. It's now an enclosed porch that created additional living space contributing to an overcrowding situation. And not only in just overcrowding, you know, we'd have parks and recs involved in some, in, in property maintenance issues where, you know, maybe in the parks, there's some issues that are going on that may require an additional police enforcement there if people are, if there's excess of rubbish being, you know, in, in the parks or if there's vandalism. So we think that, you know, having the departments working as a group can all provide information that would actually help in identifying where we have some issues. And then if we try, we, we make a case against a property where we may either need a warrant to get in or for writing a violation, we can gather all the documentation from each department to help strengthen, you know, why would we, we would feel that this particular property needs to be identified and looked into further. So we, we, in, like in this slide, we show the departments that are, are going to participate as part of this task force. And it doesn't necessarily mean like in the police department, that the police chief himself is doing it, but maybe he appoints a couple of sergeants and they rotate every month or every meeting to be involved in, 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 you know, in our meetings. Same thing with the Department of Public Works, may not be Paul Frayoli, but it could be the sanitation foreman, it could be the foreman for the Water Department rather than MDTs. But at least to have a member of each department involved that, you know, can, you know, hopefully identify some, some properties that, you know, we need to identify as potential issues where there's maintenance or overcrowding situation.
All right, so process, right? So, you know, we've kind of broken down the development of this task force into sort of two periods. First is the buildup period, followed by a coordination. So what does that mean, right? During the buildup period, for about a hundred and twenty days, we're expecting it to take. And in this first phase, the task force is going to focus on developing a strategic plan that does define. It defines the problem that the task force is trying to solve, i.e. what is overcrowding, right? What is substandard housing? Because this is really an important piece, right? I think that there, there have been a lot of expressed opinions about what the problem is specifically. But it is really important that we as a task force define the, the, the problem that, that we're trying to fix. And that's really, if we don't define it, it, it will be impossible for us to ever solve that problem. Beyond that, we would look to create metrics that can be recorded so that we can measure the success of the implementation of the strategic plan. We would look to create a calendar for the implementation of that strategic plan with a reporting period. We would identify a meeting schedule for the various members of the board for when we would meet. For that buildup period, we would identify a prioritized schedule of field visit locations throughout the village. And then we would also identify the role that each department plays in the areas of coordination and barriers to implementation. Just like Joe mentioned a minute ago, you know, each department has different sets of knowledge. And so, you know, I'm the planner, so I, I know about planning. Joe's the Building Department, he knows about, you know, Building Department issues, but the, the. you know, building department issues, but the, the water department has specific sets of knowledge that they can actually fall back on. The sanitation has specific sets of knowledge. And so it's really important that we come together and collaborate and listen to each other and learn about how we can sort of strengthen each other's position towards a common goal. Uh, and, you know, this is, a lot of this is in, in reaction to sort of the, the challenges, I think of any code enforcement officer that goes out is, can only deal with what's sort of in front of them. And there are a couple of instances, I don't want to mention the, the locations, but the, the code enforcement officers themselves might walk past these properties. One is a residential property, one is a commercial property. In this commercial property, uh, it's, it's in the downtown area, there are, um, essentially gate, uh, grates over the top of their windows. And where there used to be a door, there's no longer a door and there's just plywood. Now they have a B A R approval, right? And that approval says what they can have there. And those grates over their windows and that plywood on their former door, those aren't approved by anybody. So they don't have an approval for that. And that's something that we could identify and say, hey, you know, you gotta fix this. This is detracting from the desired impact. In another area, residential property, uh, has what is clearly a former porch that was, uh, boarded up around the edges. They put plywood around the bottom half and they put windows over the top. There's no B A R resolution that ever said that they could use plywood as siding. They actually painted the plywood. That, that, that was never approved by anybody. And so if the code enforcement is walking up through the neighborhood, it may not automatically recognize that these things were not there. But, you know, the planning department, we're going to say, oh, that doesn't look like something that would have gotten approved. We're going to go back to the office after the field visit and we're going to say, all right, let me check the, the records, the B A R records to see whether or not that's permitted or not. And that's just identifying that something may be happening that it's not supposed to. Now next, the next period is the coordination period. Uh, this is really the meat of that time. And so in, in the second phase, uh, the group should last at least nine months to allow for the implementation of the strategic plan and determine whether the plan is operating successfully based off of the review of the metrics or determine whether there are changes that need to be made. Uh, it's assumed that for this period, the group would be meeting about twice monthly. So one meeting would be to review the activities that took place, come together after the, the properties were identified to discuss what we found after doing research on those properties. And then the second meeting would be the act, the actual field visit where we go out in the field and identify the properties that we want to, uh, look a little more deeper into. Uh, and we're assuming, you know, just from an internal standpoint, we're assuming it's, these meetings are not going to take more than an hour, each one of them. Uh, there's going to be more time spent on research, sort of off on your own. Uh, a lot of that's going to be the building department, the planning department, um, and, and some of the other departments who are involved with getting the records on the water and things of that nature. But, you know, we, we think this is something that fits well within our existing, uh, schedule and something that we can manage. And, you know, so that's, that's kind of what the coordination phase is right now. So, um, beyond that, our timeline, uh, right now is that the kickoff meeting has already taken place. Uh, in June, we're going to come back together to meet, uh, to develop the outline of the strategic plan, identify possible metrics that could be used or implemented. Uh, in July, we'd be coming back to do a meeting for a review of that draft strategic plan, discuss any changes that need to be made. Uh, in August, we'd be coming back for a final review of a draft of the strategic plan, establishment of a meeting, walkthrough calendar. And then starting in September, we'd be looking to kick off the actual walkthrough process, uh, the field visits, and, and the regular meeting to, to, to sort of kick off that and start implementing. So that is, uh, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. If you could take us back to looking at each other. To the gallery. All right. I've got lots of comments, but let me go around the gallery and, uh, see if others, uh, want to say, um, anybody? I'm looking.
Uh, I'll start. Now I'll just say that I, this was something that I named in the comprehensive plan as something that needed to be addressed and prioritized by the village and, uh, I'm just so, so, so excited to have so many of the important stakeholders coming together, working uh, in coordination to, uh, tackle this really tricky challenge, uh, doing so thoughtfully and, uh, in a way that's going to, uh, make our village better. So, uh, thank you for the hard work, uh, in this effort and I'm, uh, excited to be a part of it.
Okay, um, others? Thank you, Omar. Okay.
Anybody else? But, uh, Mayor, if I may?
Sure. I'll go after you.
Um, so thank you for doing this. Um, a lot of stuff, uh, for me to, uh, to say. Um, I, I, you know, part of the mission, I guess, is statement, you, you were talking about illegal housing and I think is, is larger than Nash or, uh, we know the problem. We, we've been talking about illegal housing and substandard housing for, for years. But I think it's more than that. I, I think that title is, is a little misleading of what the goal is or, or what we're trying to accomplish with this goal. That is one of the options, what, that's one of the parts. Um, so I meant, let me ask you this, uh, in property maintenance code, uh, you mentioned that. Um, give me a little bit of an example of what property maintenance code do you think we should be addressing? One of the first things we should be addressing in a visual tour or on a visual walk? If you can help me kind of visualize that.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't think we're there yet. I, I think that it's, I, I don't have a set vision for what that strategic plan is going to look like. I think that it's super critically important that we take the time to get the feedback and input from everybody and say, hey, these are all of the things that we need to deal with. So I don't think that, I don't see there being a sort of limiting, uh, box around what we should be focusing on.
I'm not talking about that, Hato Jaime, because you mentioned main, the property maintenance code. I was just asking you for an example of property maintenance code.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would point back to the examples that I gave about, um, you know, properties that are putting up, you know, uh, the, you know, plywood on the side of their house and painting it and calling it siding, right? Uh, those are clearly, you know, things that are detracting, not necessarily, not just from their own property, but from the whole neighborhood. You drive down a street and you see people are living behind a, a, I think a plywood. I think it, it gives the implication that that property is probably not well maintained, it's not taken care of. Uh, that, that's something that, you know, we have a set of.
That, that, that could be, yeah, that could be one of them. So this is, this is why I'm, I'm, I'm heading to this. This is more like a general comment for me, sure. Uh, and, and store, hi, uh, Joe, not Karen, uh, pretty much, uh, the mayor and myself. Many years ago, it was a resident of the village who actually did a lot of homework. You know, she put together this whole list in regards to, uh, and it was a list of overcrowded. I, I want to say she, she foiled information from the school, she followed some information from tax assessors. She compared notes, put a whole list together. She had an internal presentation, uh, with, with some of us, uh, with some of the staff members. So one member in the community did a lot of the stuff that you guys are thinking of doing, uh, as a collective unit, um, you know, with this whole group of people. You know, I don't think, to me, seems to me, the concept is a great concept. I think that, that, that how you guys want to go about it, because to me, I see this as an enforcement portion of this. This is enforcement. So this is kind of falls under, under the bone department portion of it. Because I don't think, so if you guys are going to have seven members, uh, it, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. And please, I made Karen Stewart, Joe, please correct me if I'm saying something that, that's not what you guys were thinking. But if I say, if I see like seven people, seven staff members of the village walking down a block from my, from our village, our police department, what is he looking for? Maybe that's something that you guys haven't figured out yet. So, you know, I, I don't see, uh, someone from D P W being part of that walk, sure. To me, the person, the ideal candidate for this, and this is something that Karen and you and I have talked about, is now that we have an additional code enforcement, that code enforcement, I don't want them driving. It's beautiful driving. I want them walking. I want them literally walking every single block of our village. That's what I want. So that's, to me, you only need one person, one person in a tablet.
Well, though, let me, let me, let me just reframe because I think you're right, but we have a big village and a lot of issues. So it's, you know, and, and some of this, again, this is very preliminary. So the task force, the reason that it's very important from my mind, after two years of dealing with issues, that we say that we, we know what the issues are and yet we, we have made some traction, but we're not making nearly enough. And, and part of the challenge is that, that there are a lot of eyes and, um, people out in the village every day. And part of it's just internal training to make sure everybody sort of has an eye out for what they're looking for. So Joe spoke to some of this, like, for example, um, right now, um, if there's, you know, a large amount of beer bottles collecting in a certain park on certain days, the rec guys will clean up and know about it. But they don't, there's not necessarily, it's not necessarily intuitive to report that to the police department. Not saying that they wouldn't, but it may not be. And it may point to other issues so that the police now know where they can, um, uh, you know, patrol on off hours on the weekends. I, I mean, that's just not, maybe not the best example. But one of the things is that there is sometimes a bit of a siloed approach within the departments. Um, so that some things that are seen, um, you know, we all have a different lens through seeing. Sanitation is a big, big part of, of the violations that we see, a big part. So having somebody, and it's not to say that once a week, seven people from the village will all be working, walking together on every street. It's just to say that once we develop a strategy, we can then more clearly define who needs to be where and when and how we want to approach certain things. So it's, it's, you know, we have a good understanding of what the problems are. I think in terms of how we approach that problem so that we have more effective enforcement. Um, so part of this, in addition to making sure that we have a less siloed, more coordinated approach to reporting things, to dealing with things, is also working with legal to make sure that we can, um, have effective code enforcement, um, looking at administrative changes that we can make so that we can make, uh, you know, we can make sure that we're, uh, getting people to do what they need to do beyond just O T Rs or, uh, violations that go to the courts as well. So that's where I think the work has to be really done because I would argue, and I, I think that I have enough complaints, um, to support this, is that we just need to be more effective at, at dealing with these issues.
I don't, I do not disagree with that.
I would, I would also add that the, I think that we've, we've operated this entire time thinking that these field visits would include the code enforcement officers. They would be there as a part of.
I'm not, I, I hope they're there because those are the ones that are going to be writing the violations.
They're, they're obviously going to be a big part of it. But I think, you know.
Jaime, may, may I finish on my thoughts? So, so I, to me, again, it goes back to, it should be the code enforcement doing the walks. It should be, I'm not saying, you know, parks, police department, fire department. My understanding is the police department, when they have gone to a situation in a home and they see something, they usually call the bone department. I know that the fire department does the same thing. So that part of that communication is there already. So that establishment, those rules are there. Now, coordination between parks, when they see a lot of cans of beer or whatever they see in a location, that's, to me, is more like, yes, they should be reporting that to the police department so they can keep an eye on those things. But that's internal, that's internal communication. That's not part of the whole thing. So let me just kind of finish my thoughts though, please. Um, so that to me is, is a little bit, uh, maybe at the next meeting that you guys have may have some answers, sure. Uh, and store, uh, about three years ago, we brought up this concept with previous mayor. We had a meeting, we talked about, Joe was there, we talked about administrative fees because we know what was happening in here. So I hope conversations, the previous conversations that I had with store, that is, he's working on this. So to me, having that in place is going to help all this more than anything else. Because at this point, you know, to me is like, all right, we do this task in September, you guys are going to start going pretty much door to door in a way, sure. But when we get to the court system, that's when we have had a barrier. And if we don't change anything, if we don't change some of the stuff internally within regards to the laws or the process, we're going to hit that wall again and all the hard work that you guys are doing is going to be wasted. That's how I feel. So all this stuff that we are proposing is not going to go anywhere. So to me, we need to do the modifications on some of the laws, some of the implementations that we need to do and then kind of start working with the process. And again, to me, it's more like code enforcement is the person who should be doing all this because they are the ones who are going to be writing any violations or any O T Rs or anything that has to do with anything. So that's the part that maybe is not clear to me just yet. Um, it's not just about illegal housing, sure. It's about a, a hole in the roof that is being patched with a blue tark. Is that hole right there that you talked about Jaime, it's a piece of plywood that is there. So things like that, I want it, you know, and hopefully, and I'm hoping with the new program that we purchased a while back, when that is, um, fully a hundred percent online, you know, some of that information, you can just look at his tablet and he has all that information, should have all that information in front of him. So if you think that a porch was enclosed because it has a different siding, because maybe the owner couldn't match the siding, but it was permitted. So he could check in there and be like, oh, this is legal. We don't have to worry about this. And we move on to the next one. So to me, there's, there's a lot of implementation that needs to be done before anything else happens. And I'm not, and, and I just, again, those are some few of my comments, but maybe those answers, you'll get them later on. I don't know.
Yeah, can I, can I jump in there real quick? I just want to, I want to piggyback off of something he said. Great idea. I love it. I love it a hundred percent. But you hit a brick wall when it gets to the courts all the time. We are losing money every day, losing money on writing violations and nothing getting taken care of. Why? Because we don't have a surcharge. A non-negotiable surcharge should be tacked on to all of this. Because you're losing money when your code enforcement guy goes out or your building inspector goes out. He does all his paperwork, all his time, spends all his time, village time, and goes to court for it to get adjourned or they plea it down and the village sees nothing. So that's, uh, it's a great idea, but we need a backbone and a structure here that at least we have something solid to stand on. So if these guys are going to go out and do some work, we're at least recouping some of our money. Right now, we're getting nothing. And that's a problem. All right? It happens all the time. That's my first comment. Does this encompass abandoned buildings? We've got a lot of them and they're an eyesore. You know, is this strictly an outside visual? You, you, you know, we don't have the teeth to get these guys in these buildings where they really belong. Outside is one thing. I get it. But inside is where the problems are. And the only time they really get in there is if the fire department calls or the police department calls. You just can't knock on their door. So somehow we need to structure, get these guys more teeth to where they can knock on a door and do an inspection. You know, scheduled inspection. You know, I know Joe does scheduled fire inspections. I get that. And, you know, if the, you're lucky, you catch things during that inspection. But ninety-five percent of them are sneaking right underneath us. But the bottom line here is if we don't put a surcharge on these things, we're spinning our wheels. That's just my opinion. I love the idea. I'm not, it's a great idea. I'd like to see it move forward, but we really need to do a lot of homework on this one.
Can I, can I address some of the, the concerns? I think part of, um, what we're, I guess, will be over the next couple of months of the process is to identify, you know, each different violation is a different approach. Overcrowding is different than property maintenance. Property maintenance, we can see a lot of times from the street. Those are, you know, you see them, you can take pictures of them. There's no, you know, you could see a porch is falling or, uh, you know, the, the stairs are collapsing. Those are maintenance issues. They're unsightly, they're, they're not safe. It's a little different than how it's handled with overcrowding, overcrowding. You have issues with how to get in, um, you know, how, how do you, you know, build a case against an overcrowding situation? It's totally, it's a, it's, it's a different approach, a different thing. So I think part of what we intend to do here is establish specifically, what is it that we are looking to do? Are we looking specifically to do this with the intent of attacking the problems we have with an overcrowding situation or a bad housing situation? The problems we have with an overcrowding situation or a bad housing situation as opposed to. You know, you have some plywood up or your railing is loose, that's a little different, you know, maybe that approaches. You know, you tell the property owner, here's a notice. Uh, we'd like you to, you know, it's best for you to have an address on your door because the police and fire department can find you easy. Easier when there's an emergency situation as opposed to writing an OTR or trying to find a way to charge a homeowner for that. That's more informational. Where we're trying to tell people, this is educational, you need this corrected because. You know, it's, it's, it's in your benefit, it's safe to have a nice, a good handrail that's working so nobody gets hurt, nobody falls. Is a little different than how you approach um, an absentee landlord who's constantly getting away with renting rooms and. Uh, people sleeping in an attic and so forth, how we go about. Um. You know, by issuing violations for that is a little different, that involves probably court or maybe going to Supreme Court or so forth. I I think in some situations, it could be handled administratively, like, for example, we implemented a couple of years ago. Somebody doing, getting caught doing work without a permit, their permit fee is administrative fee of a thousand dollars as opposed to a hundred dollars because. You got charged with the permit fee because you did not pull your permit. I didn't have to write a violation, I did not have to take them to court, I did not have to wait for a judge to make a decision on that fee. Have also expressed, like in fire inspections, we want to get in and do a fire inspection. So maybe the first fire inspection and the second one is done, the village does that, does not charge them. We go back on the third time because the home, the property owner has not taken care of it, and now he gets charged administratively because. Code enforcement officer could be doing an inspection on another building, but yet he's coming back two, three, four, five times to this one. It's a cost for the village to constantly have to have a code enforcement officer go there and say, you have these eleven violations, I come back in a few weeks. Those eleven violations are there. I don't need to write them up and take them to the judge to tell them, tell me there's a fine. We should just charge them an administrative fee because if I'm a property owner, I don't want to pay the village. You know, whatever it is, five hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars, each time I have to have. A code enforcement officer come back because I just choose not to get this, this building. In fire safe, uh, in a fire safe situation. So. You know, I think there is some things we can do that can be just done administratively, but other situations have to get another approach. And and I think part of the next thing we have to do over the next number of, you know, meetings is. Identify what are the different things we're looking for and what will be the approaches to get those things into compliance. And I think each one has a different. A different method. And and some of it, Manny is right, is maybe that means correcting some of our codes to give us a little bit more teeth. In um, in certain ways that we can, you know, issue a violation or gain access. Whatever it is, and that's where we're working with, you know, Stuart and 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 legal team. To help us try to develop that. And in other cases, maybe it can just be done administratively. But I think that's something that we have to, as a team. Determine and lay out what is the approach to gain compliance at the best ability that we can.
Thank you, Joe, and and you're right, some of the stuff we could done this. So one of, one of the things, again, from now, and I have more to say, which I I'm. Probably just going to have an internal conversation with Karen and probably with with Joe, because I'm I'm figuring Joe is sort of the the head. Of this, this whole portion of it because of his background and his title. Um, one thing that I was missing out of this presentation for me, uh, one of many things that was missing, um, is the educational portion. Uh, you know, how do we communicate some of this stuff to our residents, sure, and and I'm going to go back, and I will never get tired of saying this. Um. I don't know, what, seven years ago, maybe I put a presentation together and that that time was a different building inspector, we have Fernando, the assessors. Uh, we had, you know. I thought it was a pretty good crowd at at that time, you know, we had it at the library, it was pretty much, how do you get a building department? How do you obtain a building department, and how do you do this? And I know Joe and I have gone into some members on the community. Joe did a presentation with Paul at the library to buy it as hispanos and some of the stuff that has to regards to building department issues. So out of all this stuff is great, I I think the task force. As a concept, is a good concept that we have to address. I think we haven't got to that point that is is like. Again, this is the group of people that we're doing and what we're going to see. Uh, I have, I haven't seen that. And again, you only had one meeting, so I'll give you guys that much, you know, but um. I, you know, the next time, or or maybe in future, I would like to see more than Joe's this, um. You know, to me, another presentation like that, and and Karen and you and I talked about, hopefully, and I don't know. Uh, when this code enforcement is going to be ready with all their uh, training. Because I'm, 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 at one point, I would love to, like I said, I would love to meet him. Because I want to take them myself and like literally walk our village, not just downtown. Like everywhere, I'll take them to Indian Village first and I'll bring them all the way. I I have no problem giving them a tour of the village of Austin. Uh, but I think it's a walking tour, not a driving tour, a walking tour. That's what we should be doing. That's a U-star implementation. And I said at that time, it's like. He should be just walking and introducing himself, be like, this is my name, this is who I am, please call me. And then it's not just that I call enforcement, I think at some point, all. Our building department officials should be able to do that. Um, because that, that, you know, just like, in a way, the police does, sure. That's what I want them to see, including Jaime. I think he definitely should walk, I know you, I know Jaime, you know the village by now. But I think when you walk the village, you guys will have a different perspective of our municipality when, even if I haven't walked. In two months in an area, I go back and I find something different that I didn't see two months ago. You know, so it's always a learning curve. I I, look. There's this, a good friend of mine that has been here longer than I have, and almost two months ago told me that he walked the Sin City Kill. Part of it, he's like, it was amazing. I was like, yeah, it's been amazing for several years now. You know, we had this open couple of years, you just went there, you know, he's like, yes, like, all right, but that's, that's what it is. To me. Um. Walking our village, you'll see a lot of stuff, and the location portion is another key. I have more, but you know, I'm going to be quiet and let somebody else talk as well.
I'd like to just quickly respond uh, with my perspective, which is, uh, I I don't disagree with any of the points. Uh, that you've made Manny or that you made Bob. My general feeling to, uh, address the question that you asked at the very beginning, Manny, is. Why, why do we need so many stakeholders in what seems to be the role of one specific department? Uh, in order to address this issue. And uh, as I see it, it's a systemic issue. It's one. That takes many different perspectives in order to solve, and the proof of that is that if it were easy to solve, it would have been solved. If it were a matter of just hiring folks and doing the job, and that that would have been done, but it's. The the difficulty you talked about, the courts, that's certainly part of it. Uh, enforcement, uh, generally certainly is part of it. But there, there's a lot more to it as I understand the issue. And that's the reason why having all the stakeholders together in the same room at the same time to discuss this issue at a strategic level makes sense. Then when you get to the technical level of how do you implement that strategy, then do you walk versus drive, do you do it weekdays versus weekends, those are all tactics. And those are different ways of getting to the same strategic vision, but setting that strategic vision takes different stakeholders, and I think that's where. Uh, the real value comes in of having as many people as we do.
I I do not disagree with that. I agree with you a hundred percent on that one, but you know, the walking portion of it to me is more code enforcement or building department. You know. Environment in a way, because I just don't see. And and not to take any value for the fire chiefs or the police department or DPW, but. The reality, what you're going to be looking, and when you do a walking tour in a way, sure, of this task forward element. To me, the main. The piece of the puzzle of the whole thing, the person most valuable on this point is going to be the code enforcement or the building department. The building department itself, I want to say, because the DPW person is more concentrated on the water. In reality, when you walk it, you're not seeing anything. So to me, that's what I think that. Is the implementation and having a meeting, an internal meeting, internal conversations, yes, I do not disagree with that. The walking part, it has to be, to me, unless someone else can can prove me wrong, to me, is it will have to be, it falls on the building department's shoulders. That's what it falls on there.
So I I think that, um, the the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh, just, I think.
I I think we're gonna, here's the thing, Joe.
Yes.
I know it's a work session, but. I want to bring this back here, okay? The presentation, as I understand it, is to inform the board that the task force is being thought of. Being introduced tonight for the first time to let us know, to sort of gauge the board. And say, what do you all think? Is this something we should move forward on? What are the macro issues? I don't think that the desired outcome for this is to start getting into the detail of how every piece of it should be done. Because then we'll be here. We might as well do the timeline and and set up, you know, an offsite for the next three hours. It's not really, in my opinion, the point of this. The point of this was to let us know, hey, we're putting together a task force. So I'd like to stay focused. On the task force, whether we should have it or not, not just, hey, it's a great idea, why do we think it's a great idea, right direction can we give? For uh, the folks who are on this task force, are they the right people? And leave the tactics and the explanations, um, maybe for follow-up. That, I I think we need to stay top line tonight. So, Joe, if it's a top-line conversation, please share with us.
What I was, all I was just going to say is basically some of the the um, suggestions, like. Uh, Manny said, and also, um, you know, they they can be part of when we discussed about what the procedure is, and that goes back to. Again, what we're trying to accomplish, like a walkthrough would work if you were looking at issues with maintenance of a building. It may not let us know whether or not a building has overcrowding situation, we'd have to have a different approach, say, to that, but. You know, I I I think overall, this is part of what I was saying originally. Each different item of what we're looking to do as code enforcement has a different approach. So, and that's something that we have to. Kind of iron out as a group and make the determinations, you know. Maybe Manny, like you said, doing the walk is very good for us to find maintenance issues and so forth, and. Those are, those are items that we want to address as well. Um, but I think that's, that's something that will be kind of laid out in the next, as we go along in the next month or two. And then like, as the mayor had said, that uh, in the follow-up meetings we would have with the board, we can further explain, you know. Each different method of what we're planning to do to accomplish what goal.
Okay, so if I may, um, add my two cents worth. Uh, let me start at the macro and go down to wordsmithing. On the macro level, this is great and it's long overdue. Um, number two, on the macro level, people. Um, councils who we have assigned as part of an education, um, do some of this work, and in. In this presentation, either it should have been included or should be in the next one. There are people who have done studies. So the Downtown Development. Um, council did a whole presentation, Manny's going to correct me, I'm not sure it matters, somewhere around three years ago. Because part of what the council is supposed to do is actually inform the board with the hopes that the board then has staff react to it. I'm not sure we've always reacted well to the presentation, except to thank people for doing it. So that one example is, I think the Downtown Development Council did a presentation, Andy, and I think, um. John Saltzman with pictures. And by the way, it didn't take the months, it took them a couple of hours on the weekend to take a camera. And show abandoned building, they called the blight, we corrected them, et cetera. So I think that part of this should be. Also a historical perspective. Uh, the the feeling, the sense I got when I saw this presentation tonight. Is, um, there wasn't enough acknowledgement that there will be a review and an incorporation of about three studies that have already been done. So Downtown, um, council did one, pictures and all. And by the way, unfortunately, some of those issues that they presented, pictures and all. I pass by some of these places every day, and they're still there. And that's what they said when they did the presentation. We are trying to be helpful, we're doing what we're supposed to. And I don't know if you guys are going to ever do anything with this, and it's about three years now. So you ha, I think the acknowledgement of past work. Because the concept being presented here, um, my sense is that it's supposed to feel like it's a new idea, but it actually isn't. On that level. The other piece that should be added into here is Laura Carbonaro did do a study. She didn't do them once, Manny, she did it more than once, and she too said, I have spent hours looking at records, she was focused on overcrowded housing. And if you guys let this sit for a year, you're basically letting it die on the vine. You might as well have said to me, we are not interested in what you're saying. Uh, because if you just don't react to it, the material becomes stale, which in fact is what happened. So a lot of this information can become stale. So I also urge you, when you're putting your mission together. And you're putting this, that you look at things in a way that are actionable item within months. Because if you try to move a mountain, you will not only move a mountain, you'll be very tired, but the mountain isn't going to move. It's a lot easier to move a few pebbles down the road. So you have to chunk things out when you do project management. Into a way that says, this we can do. And I'll get back to everything you've said, Joe, because I love where you were going. So on a macro level, take into account, I'm trying to remember, I don't think Duarka study had much, ah. So there was also Downtown, um, Development Task Force. That did a whole study, which you're all familiar with, you should really look through that because they talked about this issue. Um, as well, that was done also somewhere around a year before the pandemic. So I think. Part of the timeline, it should include looking at the studies and pulling out of them, because I think you'll find them rich with resources. And totally replicable database items in there. Um, that you might want to incorporate into how you move forward. Thirdly, on a macro level, when you use the word task force, that's a very specific uh, group of people. Task forces have beginning, middle, and generally should have ends. When they don't have an end, they probably should not have been called a task force. You could argue a task force can go on for thirty years, okay, but the the sense that people have when they hear the word task force. Is a short, like, problem-solving kind of en, kind of entity. So mission statements are great. I love mission statements, I'm a marketer at heart, so do mission statements for a living. But you really should be looking at bizarre outcomes. Once, everything should say, the so what? So if I get this done right, I will be able to solve what? So I would just recommend that. I'm not specifically speaking about anything in the prezi that we saw. I would just keep that in mind, because when you come back, I know I'm going to be asking, okay, and then what? What are you going to do with this? What I love about the task force on a macro level, number four, is the idea that the different departments work together. Um, I think that you wo, work. With one another, but you don't work together as a team. It's just not set up the way municipalities are set up in governments. Everything's very structured, it's not your fault. I'm not talking to just. Any one individual. So the idea that you guys start sharing notes, who knows, maybe one of you will say, you know what, I should just go on the garbage truck a couple of mornings. And just see what they see, because I bet you I'm going to see a lot of enforcement issues by just riding with them. One day or two days. I don't need to do walks with six other people, but that's for you guys to decide. You might come up with some things that are very, maybe you should be using a drone that can really hone in on different areas. Maybe, you know, you find your own ways. That's not for me today to discuss, but what I love about the task force is that you have the opportunity to come up with some creative thinking. About problem solving that is not done generally when people are in silos doing their jobs every day. And following the same thing over and over, because then nothing changes. So the task force for me is beautiful. Because now you guys have a chance, whether it's the right level of people, whether it should be like the topmost, um, directors. And the most highly paid people in our organization sitting together for, when I did the math, I've taught a lot of hours here, over. In my opinion, way too long of time. Um, a good consultant could do exactly what you're doing in about a third of the time. Again. Something to consider, just an opinion, and do with it as you wish, but you may want to have one level down. Um, so that it's really people who work in those environments every day, but that's again, up to you, just a sense that I have, not a, not a request. I'm looking at the whole idea of a task force and I'm loving it. And Joe. You've said it three or four times, I'm going to say it differently, you are one hundred percent spot on. You guys have to break down either by issue. By legal entity, by um, some sort of metric, what you're working on, because they all require different actions and different people. Absolutely, in this plan, I don't think it's in the mission statement, I don't think it's tactics, but I think it's in guiding principles of some sort that says. We're going to look at at groups. One group is commercial, one group is, you know, Route Nine has a whole bunch of. One group is commercial, one group is, you know, Route 9 has a whole bunch of co-ops condos and buildings. Do they really have a lot of overcrowding issues that they really have? Is that like a group, just mid-rises and high-rises? You know, if you chunk things out, and however you do it, and you describe some of them, I think you're going to be able to work on parallel paths. You're going to be able to break into subgroups and say, okay, this is how we're going to go against this, and this is how we're going to do against that. And I too agree with Manny, one of the missing is the education. If you educate people in our community about, let's call it 20%, will fix problems because they didn't even know that they were issues. So some of it might just be, as an optimist, I would say, maybe people don't know that they're doing something illegal or inappropriate. It's only going to be 10 or 20%, but it's worth doing it, a session in a library, whatever. I would just suggest that you look at educating the public also as part of the task force. How do we get there, kind of thing? And so those are my big comments. I love the idea, because I think you will all be more powerful when you work as a team, rather as individuals who speak to one another as needed. The court was mentioned. I highly recommend that it isn't just a wall, but there is a lack of understanding of how decisions are made, because they're not thoroughly explained. So an education, not by the judges who sit, but maybe retired judges or some other judges, may be helpful in understanding why some things are done the way they're done. My sense is that it is the lack of understanding of how some things happen that causes people to point fingers at others. And nobody seems to want to point fingers at themselves for maybe making a mistake and not getting things done well. So education in two sentences is both for the public, but also for this task force. An issue that they might want to include and start thinking about that. And I'm sure that when you bring it back to the trustees, we're going to sit and go, sure. If you want to bring in somebody to run through X, Y, and Z, or whatever you need, you need to buy a drone, makes sense to me. So I'm just putting it out there as some thought process. On a micro level, I really hate illegal housing as a word, even when it's been said, for lack of a better word. And I think two, three weeks ago, in a different conversation, trustee Lopez had mentioned that. I think we can say things like, things are out of code. Illegal, a few years ago, had a different meaning. Today it has a different meaning, and maybe in 10 years it'll have. But right now, where we are in our history as a country, illegal is just a loaded word. So if you could, out of code, X code, make up a word for all I care. You know, use an acronym, I don't care, make one up. Everybody else seems to. But something that says what you want, but doesn't use what I call a loaded word. I have the same thing with the word like normal. What I think you guys are trying to do is a focus, who was create some indexes? If it has more than this much garbage, not normal. I don't know what normal is for family, because I don't know what a normal family is in America today. I mean, do I, do I, am I part of a normal family? I think I am, but what do I know? So again, loaded words. Maybe in 10 years, they won't be, and 10 years ago, everybody understood what normal was. But today, normal is a different normal. I'm just going to suggest that we just look at that word and say, and Joe, you sort of said that. Index it. This much garbage is the average for a two-family, that's the index. I think, by the way, that works better in court too, if I'm not mistaken, where you can index things and say, these are what we do. That is actually what Laura Carbonaro tried to do, when she foiled all that stuff from the school, when she created a very deeply informative Excel spreadsheet. She doesn't live in our community, she moved recently. Lots of people, there was a whole community talking about it on Facebook, because it was very data-driven. And she basically created an index that said, if this happens, then there are like many families living in this two-family home. It's logical to expect that, because she used data. So I just encourage that. And again, where can the trustees be helpful? If you need somebody to help with Excel spreadsheets and data, we need to hire somebody, or we need to bring an intern, please let us know. That's what we can do, because we're not out in the task force. So that's two micro pieces that I just wanted to add to sort of the conversation. But I really do implore that there be some desired outcomes. Missions are lovely, but when you finish certain milestones, I only want to know one thing, so what? So now what? What are you going to do with that? How does this help? And, and that's it. I think it's wonderful that you guys are doing it. I think everybody talking to one another and being on the lookout, educating public, those are all great things. I very much appreciate that you guys are putting your heads together and, and doing it. And I hope, I'm looking at Joe because I'm on an iPhone tonight. So Joe, you're like the big guy at my, my gallery over here. You're, I keep getting you, oh my gosh, I keep looking at you. But I think that's sort of destined to be, because I think you've been asking for this for a while. And so I hope that we get a meeting. In that prezi presentation, there should also be somewhere milestones when you do a timeline of when you present back to the board. If you don't set it up in the beginning, it's just going to get jumbled between and between things. So I appreciate all the work. And I think most of the board members probably are going to be very excited to see what you guys come up with.
Mayor, if I may just add two more things to what you just said. So yes, and I believe Joe and Paul, at that time, with Laura Carbonaro brought that information over. When I say 2016, 2017, there was two implementations. There were, there were two cases that they were able to implement, and the other ones, I believe, they were able to resolve, not all of them, but some of them. After that, if you will recall, we actually, the village, did form, or rename, a board that was sort of in a different name, and probably still be able to remember what was the other name. But the name right now that we have, the current name that we have, it is actually Code Bureau of Appeals, which actually refers to a lot of the issues that we were talking about. And at that time, in 2017, when that was formed, we had about four people, four or five people, Joe. And unfortunately, and actually Laura Carbonaro was one of the members. And two other people, I, I, two or three people that are also from members on the community, to me. So I guess, and an overall question, is that are you guys looking at to, to, to remap or to revamp this particular board that we already established in 2017? You don't have to answer that question. That's just something that, to me, was valuable, with the concept and the idea at that time. So it seems that we have it in the books. I think it would be well worth it, actually, trying to revamp that idea and put more teeth, because that will be more teeth to what we want to accomplish at the end of the day. Because that actually, I'm looking at this statement in here, and it talks about everything that we just said.
It, it may be true, Manny, but I would be more interested that we would have kept doing what Laura did in order to find out where overcrowding is. And by letting that die on the vine, we have actually not done ourselves, we've set ourselves back. You know, if I were a cynic, I would say it happened purposefully and they're not dealt with. If I were an optimist, I would say it just happened, because she did it and not somebody else. In the sense that it was, it wasn't like incorporated into the way we do business. The point is, data-driven and data-based environments are very powerful. And then you have to keep them. You can't keep recreating, let's start fresh. I'm just urging you guys to look at what's done, Manny saying it differently. Yes, there is a board, the, the Parks and Recs looks at parks, for example. They do a presentation to us, they tell us when there's too much dirt, when things are broken, then we do a capital piece on it. But that can be also incorporated, because a task force can say, let's have the EAC do more of this. Let's have Parks and Recs do, let's create a database that somebody has already done, and we will keep it going every year. That's a tactic. That's something that the task force. I'm just pointing out things that have been done in the past, and you might want to revisit. Take the dust off of it and revisit and see how you could use what exists instead of recreating. Because, you know, if we just keep creating, but not moving things forward to action items or actionable items, then it's not as interesting. It's much more interesting if we have action items and act upon them.
Well, the only thing I, I just quickly to add to that, yes. Laura Carbonaro did do research of some study where she foiled some information about, you know, illegal housing that was caught through her doing her foils and research. And we did get a list from her, it was a list of about 60, 65 properties. And the, this, this goes back to a little bit about what I said when we first started this conversation, is putting all the information together to create the data is very good and it's great. But we have to iron out is, what is the method that we do to be able to actually put an action plan in place? Because when she put that data together, it was mostly single-family homes or two-family homes, which still, we can get that information. But I can only go to that home and request to, to inspect and get in. And if the homeowner says no, then we're stuck. We don't have an access in, we can't get into a one- and two-family home. So that's why I keep going back to the fact is, we can put the data together, we can create, what, identify which, which properties are potential issues and problems, just as she did. But now, what we need to do is establish, and each different violation has a different approach and a different.
I agree with you, Joe.
What's going to happen to get us into the home to actually be successful and correct the violation that's there? That's why we have to determine, what are we specifically trying to do? And which ones we're trying to identify? And then what's our approach on how we can, you know, accomplish and fix the situation? It's not, not just the data, what we do with.
I understand, but it's, but having data, I think we're saying the same thing. I'm also going to encourage you guys to look at that timeline that you all put together and see if you can make things happen a little faster than that timeline. That is a pretty spread-out timeline. So I'm just encouraging you, I'm not telling you, I might be missing something. But that's, you know, you might want to just revisit. That's just my sense of how long it takes to do certain things. Because this kind of a project can take a decade. It's, it's, it's huge. Or it could take 10 months all in, because it's all about how you define what you want to accomplish and what you can do in a certain amount of time. Because it could also take years versus months. It's up to you guys on the task force to decide what you can accomplish in a, in a period of time. I'd like to just shorten that timeline if possible, so that we, we can see some progress and then move to the next thing and the next thing and the next thing. Anyway, I think you came for feedback. The feedback's been, this is a very good idea. It's, I think, everybody has sat in, I don't think has spoken, but, but I think people, I have a sense that people agree that having everybody work on it together, rather than in silos, is, is good. You, your timeline, you've got an idea, you'll come back to us with more, more ideas of implementation and laid-out resources, et cetera. So I think you're getting, and we don't vote on this, this is just a work session, that, you know, go forth and conquer.
Okay, I, I, it's true, I haven't said anything yet. I think that, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I love the fact that you're all getting together and saying, let's, let's tackle this together. And, you know, I know that on the legislative level, it was interesting, I saw today, our state senator, Senator Elijah Reichlin Melnick, is also concerned about building code violations. And this, this is, you know, once you, I guess, you know, if you're going to hit the wall, maybe he's trying to take a brick out of that wall by, he says, one major policy failure, he says, it's a building code violations are a chronic problem in communities in New York, it was not just us. One major policy failure is that current law allows property owners to rack up tens of thousands of dollars in fines on a problem property. And municipalities have little recourse to actually collect those fines if a property owner chooses to ignore them. So he has introduced a bill, which was passed the New York State Senate, that will allow municipalities in Rockland County, now I don't know if this will apply to Austin as well, to tack those accumulated fines onto the property owner's tax bill. So if the owner continuously ignores the fines and then doesn't pay the taxes, the property is seized and sold to someone who'll take care of it. So, you know, these are things that, you know, it may be that, you know, you're literally on, on the ground level, working on this, but I think that, you know, it may be worthwhile seeing if this will apply to us, and if so, if he has any other ideas for laws that can help us when we hit the wall. But I think that this was, seemed like an inventive approach. But it, it's, it's a tough one, but I, I think it's, I, I wouldn't mind if a trustee was allowed to tag along if they wanted to. You know, is that out of the question?
Well, actually, that is certainly not out of the question.
And here I was trying not to bring that in, but okay.
One, one of the, one of the things, well, well, one of the.
I don't know who.
This is, this is meant to be a very, this was really, we brought to you a concept. So we are grateful for the very rich feedback we got. I want to, want to acknowledge the, the, the amount of work that Joe and Jaime have done in pulling this together and, and really being proactive about this. Because Joe knows he's been here for a bit longer, but Jaime too, that these have been longstanding issues. And there have been fits and starts and, and different things that have been done, some more successfully than others. So this is a step in the direction of, of being action-oriented and solution-oriented. So I really want to commend them on taking the initiative to make sure that we're working together. Some of the board members have asked to be involved with, and, and we, we have no problem whatsoever with if the board wants to assign people to the task force, or if various points in time, depending on your time, board members want to go for walks. And, and I think that a lot of the details of this, who's doing what, what levels, everything of that, that's all going to be ironed out. Really, the purpose of this meeting was just to bring forth the concept in, in a very general preliminaries type of way. So it really leave it up to the board to determine whether they would like to assign people to the task force to be participants regularly, the similar, the way you're doing so on other things, whether it's the comp plan or the GPW site. But certainly, walks around the village will, will let people know and, and we're always welcome, be able to join us. We found during the comp plan that taking walks around the village was a really great way to see things through a different light, and we'll continue to do so. So thank you so much for the enormous amount of information that you've been able to give us in detail. I feel like we've had our first three meetings already, and as far as.
We don't want to disappoint.
As far as timing, we, we don't want to overpromise and, and under deliver. So right now, we set forth what I believe is probably a generous timeframe, but we'll see how it goes. And what we'll likely do is break down, as we look at the strategy, break down milestones and things, accomplishments based on priorities. So we'll see traction along the way too. And then we'll see how this goes and, and how the task force evolves and what is, you know, what's left afterwards, when, when we kind of figure out more viable and more sustainable solutions to issues that have been plaguing us for some time now.
So, and we'll continue, I just want to say, I'm sorry, Bob. Three people have shown an interest in being on this task force. We can only have two, so I was simply going to email you guys. Not, it's not the same as if you want to join a particular meeting, or if you want to be involved in something, or if you want to do some walk, that's separate. But three people, and we can only have two, have shown an interest in being assigned to this. So I was going to take it offline and just send an email around and say, okay, let's choose two people. I mean, you know, I, I prefer to have people sort of raise their hand and agree to who the two is, rather than be simply a point, you know. And, and maybe we do six months and six months, whatever. So I just wanted to share that, and, and we'll get back to you, because I think two people will be raising their hand at least. I've already got three, so we'll assign two people, two trustees.
So just real quick, just to touch on what the senator is doing. He's also on board with us with FASNY, because we're also going after illegal modifications endangering first responders. It's one of our hot button items with legislation this year. So we're just waiting for it to go through to the House, hopefully, and end up on the governor's desk. My, my other last thing I'm going to say is, Stuart, when it comes to laws like this, is there laws that we could put in place that would hold these people accountable? You know, I understand what he's doing over there with the taxes, but, you know, money to these guys are just a, a daily business. They walk around with a stack of hundreds in their pocket and they don't care about a fine. You know, is there, is there something that we could put together for certain specific items? You know, I'm. You know, I'm just shooting an idea, throwing a dart right now, to give, to give code enforcement building inspectors more teeth, so when they do write these violations or whatever like that, it's not a, you know, a plea, a bargainable thing. It's, it's just, this is what happens.
There are things that can be looked at. Uh, I do just want to say one very brief thing. Uh, this is not a court issue. Uh, you know, I, I, I have said this to the co-enforcement officers, I've said this to the building inspector, I have said this to anyone who will listen. This is not a court issue. This is an issue of getting people in the community or the building owners to comply with the code that exists. Our job when we go to court is to be as fully prepared as we can. If we're successful, great. If the case gets dismissed for issues that we don't think are there, we can appeal it. But the idea is to get the work done before we have to go to court. You don't want to have to go to court. I would love to be able to say, we don't have cases on the calendar. But I, I'm, I, I don't want to, I'm not here to make any other statement. I just think it's important to note that the court's not the bugaboo here. The issue is to just be able to deal with it. Some cases have to go to court, but at the end of the day, our job is to be as prepared as we can. If we have to go to court, use what, 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 what ammunition we have. But ultimately, to deal with it before it even hits that point. That's to me, one of the factors here.
And I think Joe actually had mentioned that earlier as well. Anyway, um, and, and there are fees that we could set when we do the budget meetings, Bob, on some, some of these, but maybe not as far as you want to take it. Okay, I'm not seeing any more conversation. This is sort of exciting, frankly, um, to see this come together. A number of us have asked for something in this vein. Um, this is terrific stuff. I appreciate everybody's work. Um, and it's a pretty powerful team being put together, so much appreciated. Uh, I think we can move on to the next item, village manager.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Joe and Jaime, again. Um, and our next topic, we're, uh, Corporation Council Cahan will be talking about local, proposed local laws five, six, and seven that have to do with uh land use board signage and, and land use. Um, with that, I will turn it over to him.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Karen. Uh, this, folks, you may recall, these deal with uh notification of land use actions. We've discussed these three local laws before. The reason it's coming back is that local law five, which is, was a change to the zoning code, uh, went to the planning board for its recommendations. The recommendation letter is part of your packet. They were strongly in favor of the local law. And uh, what we would ask is that at the next Board of Trustees meeting, uh, we present a resolution to the board calling for public hearings on proposed local laws five, six, and seven, with those public hearings to be held on the 16th of June. Um, and unless there's any other questions uh with regard to these, uh, that's, that's why this is before you tonight, because we wanted to get back the uh determinate, the, the recommendation from the uh uh board, from the, from the planning board.
Okay. Thank you. You have I lost you, Stuart. Are you on mute?
Nope, I'm here.
Okay, okay. So, thank you. Is there any comments, folks?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that for next week.
Okay, short and sweet. Sorry, I have to turn my video off for a minute. Short and sweet. Okay. Let's move on for next week.
Thank you.
What else do we have?
Next up, oh, go ahead. I'm just, I'm going to just reintroduce you for the boat cabaret license?
Yes, folks, the last one is a
Boathouse cabaret, I'm sorry.
Cabaret license for the boathouse. Uh, and uh, earlier this year, they received a refreshment license, at which point the police said that there were no complaints, and the building department passed the inspection. They're asking for a cabaret license uh to have a cabaret operating two nights a week. That would be Friday and Saturday from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM uh with one to five performers. Uh, and uh, I would like to present the resolution to the board next week, uh, approving the cabaret license for the boathouse.
I just have a quick question. I have no issues, a question of Stuart, which is, is the boathouse one corporation or two? Because they have sort of two sections.
It's one corporation and they lease the space from the Shadow Mac Yacht Club.
Got it. Thank you so much. I'm, I'm ready to go forward with, with this. So I don't know if there are any comments.
No, it's a, the um, great place to go hear a band and have a drink, so I'm all for it. Anything we could do to go hear a band and have a drink, I'm all for it.
I'm in favor of this. I, I, I go there for the food though. I don't go there for the drink.
Okay, I'm not hearing any objections. I think we can put it on for next week.
We shall. Thank you, Wood.
What else do you have for us, Karen?
That concludes um our agenda for this evening. So
Mayor, could we have a motion to uh go into executive, adjourn into executive session for matters of real property and personnel regarding specific persons?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Um, for our work session, we'll see you next Wednesday. Have a good and thoughtful Memorial Day. And uh, we'll see you next Wednesday. Bye-bye.